Good evening, council members. It's 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with the invocation led by Councilmember Smith, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Testerman. Please rise as you're able.
Tonight, we come to share ideas. We all carry some amount of joy, some amount of hurt, some amount of pain. We all probably said something we'd like to do differently today. We likely missed an opportunity to help someone. But we're all trying to do our best. Please give us fresh air to try again. We all share the desire for kindness and healing. We can all offer grace to one another. Help us to hear one another. Let us do honest and meaningful work. Amen.
(Inaudible) We, United States of America, consider Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson, would you please call all?
Councilwoman Fugid.
Councilwoman Park.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Here.
And Councilman Thomas. Eightth present mayor.
Thank you. Next is motion, is there a motion on the minutes from May 2nd?
Yes.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Councilmember Smith.
Item 12.
I think your mic's not working. Just, so, there's a motion to withdraw based on the request of the applicant, items 12, 12I, J, and K?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made to withdraw, items 12I, J, and K has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Smith.
I'd like to make a statement real quick if I might. Is this working still?
Yes.
There we go, now we're on. I just want to, these items were all part of a rezoning that involved very complex considerations. I want to thank everybody in South Knoxville who voiced their perspective. But I particularly want to thank the applicant for hearing everyone involved. This is a very hard decision, and it's rare for an organization like this to listen well and make such hard decisions. So, I'm grateful for McNab and its continued role in our community, and thank you for the support.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Singh.
Thank you. I would just like to add on to what you were saying. The work that they need to do with recovery centers is really important, and I am hoping that all of us help to find them in other locations soon, because people die every day, and also to help them secure some more state funding, because I think they're going to be losing some funding by the timing and stuff like that. So I want us to make sure and make a commitment to that.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, consistent with both my colleagues, this is a very important issue, and I'll be happy to, as a city councilperson, to aid McNab or any other treatment facilities that are trying to handle this problem, whether it be find a location or find extra money. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas, and I will just add on, on behalf of the administration and the city, we are also very grateful for McNab's partnership. We're very aware of the acute nature of the need for recovery and rehab services, and we will do whatever we can to help them find space, or expand the current space, or some combination thereof, and also help work with the state officials to understand that they need funding to make this possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments on this motion to withdraw? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Those items are withdrawn. Are there any other items to be withdrawn? Seeing none, are there any items to be postponed? Are there any items requested to be added by motion? Is there anything on consent?
No.
Okay, nothing on consent, so we'll move on to my report. I want to start this evening with a reminder that we are gearing up for our fourth community open house meeting, and this one is in West Knoxville on Thursday, June 1st, 4:30 to 6:30 PM at Bearden Middle School. Residents are invited to attend anytime during that period, and during that event, you can talk to city staff and partners who are going to be available to share information and updates about all kinds of projects in the West Knoxville area, including Pleasant Ridge Road, KUB Fiber Internet, Kingston Pike Complete Connections, Lake Shore and West Hills Park, Neighborhood Traffic Calming, and many other projects. So you can learn more at KnoxvilleTN.gov/WestKnoxville for more information on the open house. So again, that's June 1st, Thursday, June 1st, 4:30 to 6:30. I also wanted to take a moment to congratulate all of our students in the community graduating from area high schools and colleges and universities. I want to wish good luck to all the students who are taking finals as the school year winds down. This is a busy and intense time for families and school personnel, but it is also a time for celebration. These kids have made it through some tough challenges the last four years or beyond, and I'm really proud of all the people who've helped them along the journey. Next week is the final week of classes for Knox County Schools, so I want to take a moment to thank all the teachers and staff members and families, and wish everyone a pleasant start to the summer. And making summer pleasant, some things the city's doing for families in particular, we are going to be bringing back a few summer favorites, including Concerts on the Square, which kicks off Variety Night this Thursday. This is free, family-friendly entertainment. The shows run from 7:00 to 9:00 PM on Market Square. And we're also going to be re-upping our award-winning Kid horrific program. That's going to be back again this year. This is free family fun, and the first day will be June 7th at Fountain City Park. And you can find a complete schedule of the Kid horrific events on our website at KnoxvilleTN.gov. And councilmembers, if you haven't had a chance to attend, I know, you know, they're often in the middle of the day, but if you have free time to stop by, they're very popular. Families from all across the community bring their kids and grandkids to them, and it's a great way for them to enjoy some cool stuff about our city, and it's free, and, you know, I think they love the trucks, the most, the most fun thing to crawl around, or various vehicles. And before we move on to the rules of decorum, I want to just acknowledge that tonight is Harold Cannon's last city council meeting. Harold is moving on to semi-retirement after three really amazing years as our Director of Engineering and Chief of Economic Development. He's been a great leader, and a good friend, and counselor, and we will miss your council, and we will miss your sense of humor, but we're very, very grateful for all that you've done for our city. So, please join me in thanking Harold for his service to the city. And a quick reminder, those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum should sign up with Will Johnson, the city recorder, ahead of time. Council rules state that up to three people each may speak for or against an agenda item, and right now, there are four people signed up to speak to item 11, in favor of item 11B. So, you might consider asking, asking for, to roll back into three, or council can suspend their rules and allow all four. Please do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note that you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports of council members? Vice Mayor Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my understanding that Councilmember Singh has a birthday coming up, and so I just wanted to wish her in advance a happy birthday. So, happy birthday.
Should we talk about my age, too?
I did not include that in the greeting.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other announcements from council members? Okay, I'm glad we're inside here. Sounds like the rain is back. All right, moving on, Mr. Johnson.
9A is an ordinance of the Council of the City of Knoxville to amend Chapter 7.5, Article 1, Section 7 of the Knoxville City Code to clarify the responsibilities of the internal auditor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution recognizing the centennial anniversary of ironworkers Local 384 and celebrating the work and community involvement of members of Local 384 in Knoxville and our region. Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Singh.
Thank you. I just want to show, if you can hear me over the rain, express my appreciation for all of the representation you guys did over the last few months. Think you were a very strong example of advocating beyond your own self-interest, speaking up for community, community benefits agreements, all workers. I think it's very easy for us to take for granted what the labor movement has done, like we take for granted weekends, 40-hour work weeks, child labor laws, all of the things that were fought hard for, and thank you. And 100 more years of economic justice. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Singh. Before I call you, Councilmember Thomas, Chris O'Keefe has signed up. Mr. O'Keefe, if you'd like to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak to council.
All right. Chris O'Keefe, Ironworkers Local 34, 1000 Buchanan Avenue. We've met before. Thank you for allowing me to speak, American Cannon and the council. Good evening. I think it would be a missed opportunity not to express our feelings about Knoxville and what we've done in the past 100 years. So, I have notes this time. I'm going to try to work a little bit of both, but I'm a free speaker, too. So, I'd like to thank you all for considering our resolution and your support of our union and our apprenticeship training program. I'd like to extend my sincerest thanks to Andrew Roberto for the sponsorship and the co-council, the council for unanimously sponsoring us well. It means a lot to all of us. Skilled labor is essential to the growth and prosperity of our city, and our program provides valuable skills and opportunities for the people of Knoxville. We have always been a strong supporter of labor and equal pay. We believe that every worker deserves fair compensation and benefits for their hard work and dedication. We have consistently advocated for policies that promote fair wages and equal opportunities for all workers. We're also proud of our apprenticeship program, which provides our members with the training and skills they need to succeed in their careers. Our program combines classroom instruction with on-the-job training and giving our apprentices a well-rounded education and solid foundation for their future. In closing, I would like to express my deepest gratitude to everyone who has supported Local 34. We are proud of our history and our contributions to the community. We remain committed to our values of supporting labor and equal pay, and we will continue to work towards a brighter future for all workers here in Knoxville. Once again, I want to thank you all for this, and it means a lot to us, to 100 years, 100 more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, I just want to simply add as well that we really appreciate what this labor union has done, and the effect that all labor unions have done throughout the country as far as increasing benefits, working conditions, and employees throughout the country are getting benefits of your work, whether they're actually members of a union or not. So, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to recognize Local 384 and lend my voice as well to thanking you for all the community support you've put out there, over 100 years, which is, which is just fantastic. Just highlighting some of the things that are in this, this resolution. You have been such an active and involved member in our community, whether it's, you know, sponsoring youth sports teams, starting a youth football league, providing financial support for goalposts and scoreboards in our community, working with schools and art competition, providing school supplies for dozens of students at Fulton High School. And also, you know, just what you're doing every day, donating to, you know, yearly to the Knoxville Firefighters Association. You know, we really appreciate all that you're doing, but just from an economic driving perspective, we need skilled workers, and your apprenticeship program and what you're doing to get skilled workers out in the workforce is so important. You know, our power infrastructure depends on, on your workers, and so we appreciate what you're doing every day. And I was just really impressed that, you know, since 1970, there's been over 1,000 skilled workers put into the workforce in our community to work because of, of all your efforts. And we definitely need all those skilled workers, and just wanted to express my appreciation for everything you're doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Roberto, and I would just add on to that, that I had a chance to visit your facilities up in North Knoxville. We're so grateful that you're training people on safety and skills and giving, and most importantly, paying them while they learn the trade. It's a great career path. I think a lot of organizations are seeing the values, value of doing that now in a tighter labor market in ways they'd never seen before. People have their choice of places to work, and, and they know that they can't, they shouldn't be giving away their labor for free, and, and that includes training and apprenticeship. So, thank you for setting the high, high standard, not just in this year, or five years, or 10 years, but for 100 years. It's a really, you know, a great contribution to the Knoxville community and to our labor force in particular, so we're grateful. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and if Mr. O'Keefe, if you'd like to come up and get a copy of the resolution, we'll, we'll clap for you, for your 100 years while you come up. Thank you. Next item, please.
11B is a resolution respectfully requesting state legislators representing the City of Knoxville work toward the adoption of legislation recognizing violence involving firearms as a particular threat for young people in Tennessee and enacting a stronger order of protection law. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, several people have signed up to speak on this item. First is Owen Davis, and these, first speakers in favor are all, the people who composed the resolution are all members of the mayor's youth council, and really grateful for their efforts in composing this and bringing it to council. Owen, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Owen Davis, 6031 Pleasant Ridge Road. 6031?
Okay, all right. We got it.
Good evening, council members. My name is Owen Davis, and I am a member of the Knoxville Mayor's Youth Council. I am also a junior at West High School, where there was a shooting on April 28th, just a few weeks ago. It was a frightening and unsettling day for everyone. We were sitting in class, going about our regular schedule, when we heard an announcement through the intercom, quote, "Students and teachers, we are now going into a medium lockdown." A medium lockdown is a step below hard lockdown. We could continue with class, but doors were locked, and no one could enter or leave, including teachers. We tried to continue with class, but no one could really focus. Everyone was reaching out to people in other classes to find out what was going on. The scariest part of that day for me was being totally blind about what was happening. I heard different versions of the story from everyone I talked to. No one seemed to know what was happening, not even teachers. At first, they said it was a firecracker that went off, but through social media, we discovered that a student had, in fact, brought a gun to school, which they posted online. We found out that the gun had misfired in the student's backpack, but stories conflicted about what happened afterwards. As far as I knew, the police were still looking for the armed student. So when the school let out at 12:30, I was confused as to why we were allowed to leave. It wasn't until after we left that I found out the full story. The student's gun had, in fact, misfired, but the piece of information that not even the school had provided was that the bullet grazed a teacher. For the rest of the day, I found myself reflecting on what could have happened if the bullet had caused more damage, or had the gun not misfired and instead been used intentionally to inflict even more harm. How can we be expected to return to school if a teacher has been seriously injured or, God forbid, killed? How can we return to school and feel safe, knowing how easy it was for someone to sneak a gun in and threaten the lives of everyone at school that day? How can we be expected to focus on our work while knowing that we are risking our lives every single moment we are at school? I also feel outraged by our state's lack of meaningful action to address this massive threat. Gun violence has been the leading cause of death of American children and teens since 2020, and yet, several state lawmakers have publicly refused to take any action against gun violence. This comes after the Covenant School shooting in Nashville, which happened less than two months ago, or rather, 85 mass shootings ago. At the Covenant School, three elementary schoolers, a substitute teacher, a custodian, and the head of the school were murdered. And still, many Tennessee lawmakers simply refuse to acknowledge the issue or demand any action. I come here today to let you know that the youth of Knoxville will not stand for this inaction. We demand action because our lives depend on it. We demand action for the sake of the mothers who spent Mother's Day mourning the loss of their child to gun violence. We demand action because there are things we can do to help stop gun violence, several of them outlined in our resolution. The most important starting point for accomplishing any of these things is to come together as a city and recognize the issue of gun violence, and you can accomplish this today, council members, by passing this resolution. This is not and should not be a partisan issue. We can all agree that we need to keep our children safe. You are community leaders in a position where you can have a major impact in the fight against gun violence, but you are also parents, uncles, and aunts. I ask that you fight for the youth of Knoxville as you would fight for your own children or other special children in your lives. And most of all, I ask that you listen to what I am saying and take it to heart. During our last youth council meeting, we were asked how we thought adults could make our community safer. The overwhelming answer was simply to listen to youth input, because right now, we feel like we are being ignored and cast aside by the political system. Forming the youth council was a great step in the right direction, but now it is time to listen to what we have to say, and even better, to act upon it. The council was formed specifically for the purpose of elevating the voices of youth from across the city. This is our voice, our input, and today, you have a chance to not just hear it, but to genuinely listen and act upon it. You have an opportunity to give hope to all the youth who feel unsafe in their own schools or neighborhoods, and who feel like there is no hope of things improving. You can stand up to the forces of division and inaction that only serve to worsen the gun violence epidemic, and you can move beyond thoughts and prayers and deliver meaningful action to your constituents who depend on it. Overall, I urge the passage of the resolution on behalf of the youth of Knoxville, and I am hopeful that you will listen to our voices and take a crucial step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Anaya Wurles. If you could please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Anaya Wurles, 5813 Bo-Kate Lane. Hello, my name is Anaya Wurles. I am a senior at Central High School. I'll be graduating this Friday, woo-woo, and I will be attending Tennessee State University, majoring in political science with a minor in pre-law. So, for starters, I want to start with the statistics. In the United States, at least 202 mass shootings have occurred within the first five months. There has been at least two school shootings and more than 13,900 people killed in gun violence. As disappointing as this is, my disappointment is in lawmakers. Lawmakers are contributing more to the issue rather than fixing it. Most of the bills lawmakers are proposing have nothing to do with guns. Instead, they propose more security rather than fix the issue, which are the guns. Adding security isn't going to prevent mass shootings. It may prevent it from worsening, but it's not going to stop the drive for violence that we see every day. It's disappointing to see people in position of power not use it correctly. As a younger generation, I definitely do fear not only my future, but even this present moment. People are dying from doing normal day-to-day tasks, from simply going to school, which is supposed to be a safe environment for our education, to going to grocery shopping or even going to the mall. Eight people were killed at a mall in Dallas on May 6th. Following that, before, there was an Atlanta mall shooting. Simply just driving a car, an incident in Knoxville where a man was arrested in April for shooting at someone due to road rage. Walking out of the house, I question, am I next? Seeing this everyday issue has honestly became numbing. Hearing that someone was killed on the news simply for doing normal day-to-day tasks seems so normal due to how much it is happening. We shouldn't accept the fact that this is the world that we live in when we have people in position of power who can fix it. Just because this issue hasn't happened to us doesn't mean this issue doesn't exist. You shouldn't have to become a victim or lose a loved one to senseless gun violence before realizing that America has an issue. As a younger generation, it is our responsibility to speak up when this issue, speak upon this issue until lawmakers hear us out. Just accepting the fact that this is the world we live in defeats our future and even the present moment. Taking action and shining light on the issue of gun violence can create a new world where we don't have to worry if we will make it to tomorrow or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is William Mendoza. You can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is William Mendoza. My address is 2442 Brown Avenue. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak, and thank you to the city council members that are here. Today, I want to talk about a dream and a hope that my parents had. The hope that they had before coming to the United States from Honduras. They came to Knoxville, Tennessee, with a hope to keep their daughter and their future children safe. They came here because they knew if they stayed in Honduras, their children would not be safe, because they know that in any corner, they could get shot and killed. Having me here at Knoxville only made that hope bigger. It made, it made the dedication to keep us safe stronger. I remember telling my parents about having an active shooter drill on my head start, which is the only thing I remember there, which they would cut out a crocodile, and that was the, that was the shooter, so we had to hide from it. Later on in middle school, I remember my father telling me, "William," he said it in Spanish, you know, says, my father says, "William, is there's a shooter at your school? Hide or run. Do anything you can do to stay alive." I can see how heartbroken my father was. The hope to keep us safe was broken. My parents could not imagine that this was happening in the states. The only reason why they came here was to keep us safe, and that was broken. My father, as a pastor, not only prays for me, but prays for all the children in my school, and prays for all the children in Knoxville, but that doesn't help. We are dying. How many more have to die? Does my school need to be next? Do my friends have to die? Do I have to die? I know you don't have the power to change that, but you do have a power to make a stance. The people of Knoxville are watching you. I am watching you. It is scared, you know, next year, I'm gonna be a senior, I'm about to leave, but it's scared that I have a 10-year-old little sister that has to go through this, that have cousins that haven't even started school yet and they have to go through this. It is scary. We are dying. We are suffering, and people are not listening to us. You know, there's people that have, that they put you in, in a place to fight for us, to listen for us, and those legislators that we have aren't listening to us. I was there at Nashville when they tried to expel Gloria Johnson, Justin Jones, and Justin Pearson for fighting for our lives. And to see the amount of students that were there fighting is showing that we do care. It's showing that we are tired, that we are dying, that we are suffering. Today, actually, when I went to school, my counselor just randomly said, "Oh, there is another school shooting." That's how common it was. Oh, there's another school shooting. Was I surprised? No, I was not surprised. We are dying. I could be next. You could be next. Your children, your grandchildren, anyone can be next. So please stand up and vote yes on this, because we are watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, there's a fourth person who signed up to speak in favor of this event. Is there a motion to?
To suspend the rules.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Joe Nicely? Joan Isley, signed up to speak in favor of this. Ms. Isley, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Okay. My name is Joan Isley, 37918. Hello, my name is Joan Isley, and I want to make a statement. I want to go home at the end of the day. I want to feel safe at school. I want there to be no school lockdown drills, and I want no child to die. But for any of this to happen, we need to stand up. Thank you for your time, and I ask you to support the youth council resolution.
Council members, there's one person signed up to speak in opposition to this, David Conway. Mr. Conway, if you could come to the podium, you'll have, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you, Council. My name is David Conway, 1505 Salem Road. I would like to speak out in opposition of supporting the governor's partly thought-through red flag portion of his law. The rest of his law, I don't really disagree with or agree with. I just disagree with the lack of due process in any red flag ordinance or state statute. I would also like to take a moment and say that my heart does go out for the victims of any gun violence. However, I do not feel that any law that has ever been implemented to control people's access to guns has ever prevented anyone from causing harm with guns, since it's typically criminals that are the bad actors. I do actually have a speech prepared, if you give me just a moment. All right. Okay. So when reviewing the stats used by our governor to push for a red flag law, I discovered that he and the sources he cites chose to ignore most of the statistically relevant data. Most of the increase in gun violence was in urban areas. Most of the increase in gun violence was unfortunately black-on-black and shortly after the Antifa riots. That's just the statistics as they're presented in the data by the federal government. It is not me stating anything in regards to that. When crime in general skyrocketed and gangs fought for control of lucrative new territory, including theft rings and other new criminal revenue streams that occurred in cities where prosecution of petty crimes didn't. If a criminal enterprise doesn't tell you about crimes they commit, are they likely to suddenly tell you about guns they possess? And therefore, how would you seize said guns, since red flag laws rely on self-reporting of ownership? I would also like to state that the rise in gun sales that was cited in that study was a direct response to the increase in crime and decrease in police activity and protection in high-crime areas. The areas where it increased the most were predominantly areas with the strictest gun laws in the U.S., like Chicago, Portland, Oregon, which unfortunately is my hometown, New York City, and Detroit. The study cited a comparison of Mississippi and Hawaii, which are basically as similar in culture as New York and Rogue River, Oregon, which is where I went to high school, and ignored the vast majority of gun violence in states are in one city in that state, which is usually nothing like the rest of the state. Guns level the field and are the greatest deterrents we have. They are, in fact, a great way of preventing crime, even if they are not loaded. The act of using a gun is nowhere near as effective as the act of possessing one. They say that a good guy with a gun can stop a bad guy with a gun. I say that a good guy with a pen can cause more harm than a bad guy with a gun. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, that concludes people signed up to speak on this item. I want to, excuse me, sir, your, their time is up. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Are there any council members who wish to speak to this? Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. I just want to say to the, the young folks that spoke up today that we hear you, and I don't think there's, I think this council is very much in support of this resolution. And I, I know that I'm always trying to speak to the state, and I believe a lot of my colleagues are as well. Thank you for putting this work into it, and I'm sorry that this is how you have to live.
Thank you, Councilmember Singh. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilmember Singh. I found your words to be powerful tonight, and I appreciate you sharing them. It really struck me thinking about children in Head Start going through active shooter drills. That certainly was not my experience, and, and I'm not that old. I'm not, you know, I'm in my 40s. And so I agree with my fellow council member that I imagine there's a lot of support on this council for this resolution and for the state to take further action. I will say, I've also had some concerns with some red flag laws and some discriminatory ways that can be applied, but I think we're at a point now where we need to pass these laws and then work to improve them once they are passed, because we need these tools to get guns out of bad actors' hands. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you all so much for speaking tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I'm probably going to be pretty brief and not speak that eloquently to the subject. I, when I was hired for my current job, we never discussed active shooter drills, and it turns out it's something we do with regularity. So I have to ask students to hide under desks. I have to ask them to hide in the dark, and I have to talk through them about what we're gonna do when a shooter comes for us. And like many of us here, we didn't do that when I was in school. We took shelter drills for tornadoes and thought that was, you know, burdensome enough. But now I instruct students how to, what we're gonna do. And in response to the Covenant shooting, I received three emails, and I am not in any way knocking my employer. I received three emails offering me additional training on how to do active shooter drills and be prepared for active shooters. And at the rate, and I have two children in schools. It's just not enough, and it's not adequate, and something is broken. And the majority statistically that want something, that want action on this issue, ranges from 70% to 80% of the populace. This is not an unpopular topic. It may be unpopular among a few. And the only thing I'll say in closing is, I am no expert on red flag laws or any of the ways that they can be misapplied or appropriately applied, but what I will say is there is a special session that has been called, fortunately and finally, because the time has passed to do that. And that's the only topic they'll have to focus on. So they won't have to worry about all the other topics. They can focus on one issue and hopefully do a pretty good job of coming up with something if they will listen to the populace and what the populace wants. I have a friend right now that I will briefly touch on, who has been threatened by someone who would probably trigger red flag laws. And because we have nothing, we just sit and wonder and wait to see if said person might go purchase guns, or maybe they have some already. But if they didn't, in the wake of the many signs that they've put out there outwardly that they want to take action with guns, which they have done, there's nothing to do to stop that. So until I hear that the person hasn't taken action on the threats that they've made, then I just say, "Whew, another day has gone by that this person who would trigger a red flag law has not done something." Good news today, and hopefully tomorrow, and the next day, because we have nothing to address the issue when we know somebody is a threat and has threatened individuals and groups of people. So these are all concerns that we need to take care of, and I appreciate the youth speaking up about this, and I ask you to keep doing it and get all your friends to do about it, because those of us who were voting age haven't been able to make an impact on it. So I look forward to supporting your resolution.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we heard from, we heard some powerful messages today from young folks in our community, and, you know, I, I agree with all the sentiment that you gave us today. You should feel safe in your school. You should feel safe going to the grocery store. You should feel safe going to your church, to your synagogue, to your bank. Unfortunately, each of these locations where an incident like this has happened, and we could keep going, because there's more. You should feel safe going anywhere you want to go. I, I'm, I'm very happy to support this resolution. It's something that is supported by, you know, over 70% of Tennesseans, and so this, this is something that needs to be done. And to all of the young folks who came and spoke, you may not be 18 now, but there's something else you can do when you turn 18, and that's register to vote and vote, and I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, to all the young peoples who so eloquently spoke. You don't have to be an adult to tell the truth and to speak the truth, and you're living proof that, of that, and thank you for sharing your truths with us today. Thank you.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you, Mayor. I will say that as a former chair of the Board of Education and also on the Board of Education when the Central High School shooting happened, I agree with you. It is time for something to be done. I'm very pleased that the governor has called a special session, but I would encourage all this passion and desire for change to ask you to reach out to the elected representatives who actually can vote on it, who are here locally. I do not like supporting resolutions from one elected body to another elected body, because we, they don't always listen to us, they haven't listened to us on other things. You are the people that vote for them, and you are the people who need to go speak to your elected officials now while they are out of session before they go back to session, because they're the ones that actually have the power to make the votes to change this. I support the spirit and intent of this. I strongly encourage and will be talking to my elected officials as a citizen, asking them to work to fix this. But I want you to understand, I'm going to abstain from the vote on this because I don't want, I don't like supporting resolutions from one elected body to another, but I am not against your desire. Everyone wants safe schools. We all should feel safe, whether we're young people or not. I've worked in a financial institution. I know what it's like when somebody comes in with a gun and holds you hostage and, and robs money. It's a terrifying thing. I don't, I'm not an expert. I don't know what it will take to fix this, but I do know that starting the conversation, this session, is encouraging, very, very encouraging. I appreciate that you've brought this to our attention. Your, and speaking up here publicly, I just would encourage you to also make one-on-one appointments with everybody who represents us in Nashville, because they're the ones who can fix this. Thank you.
Councilmember Testerman? Your light's broken? I'm sorry.
It is still broken.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to concur with Councilmember Fugit in the sense that, you know, it is difficult, I mean, again, the spirit of the resolution and the message of, you know, the intent, but unfortunately, that's all it is, and we can't, you know, we can't fix it. You know, I've always believed in common sense policies to support responsible gun ownership, and, you know, I, I don't support permitless carry that our state passed. I think it makes our law enforcement responsibilities more difficult, especially with the pipeline of, of individuals. You know, both my girls went to West High School, and, you know, I received calls that day and have employees whose children go there and write down the street from where we work, and we do practice active shooter drills. So I completely understand as well, and, but again, I think to, to reach out to those individuals that can actually be the ones to affect and impact that change, you know, is, is really the course of action. So I just wanted to say that for the record.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to add earlier that I wanted to be added as a cosponsor.
Okay. Mr. Johnson will take care of that. Counsel, I just want to reiterate my gratitude for the students who brought forth this resolution. I wholeheartedly support it and appreciate that you took the time to write it and to come to counsel. We are listening. It, it is our job as elected officials to listen to all our constituents, including young people. I have been the recipient of text messages from my kids when they were in a lockdown in high school, and they didn't know what was happening, and they were saying, "We love you." You know, "Tell Grandma and Grandpa we love them." I mean, you know, it's, it's not something any parent, any kind of text a parent wants to see, and anything a child wants to write. It doesn't have to be this way. Other countries don't live in fear of getting shot by guns at, at the grocery store, at school. I've, I've been at church here in Knoxville when, when there was a, a shooting that killed two people. It can happen here, it has happened here, but we don't have to live like this, and I think this resolution is a really positive step in the right direction. I hope our legislators will listen, and I, I think with your help and that of other members of this city, they will. Thank you. Councilmember Parker, did you have another comment? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant award of up to $2 million from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs with no required local match to support community-based violence intervention and prevention initiatives.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents to award a total amount not to exceed $198,621.50 in summer opportunity youth program grants to provide support and programming for youth and young adults to 13 community-based organizations in the city.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Council members, it is my pleasure to bring for your consideration tonight and hopefully your approval, grants of nearly $200,000 to 13 community organizations that serve area youth. Through our Summer Opportunity Youth Program, we know that we are reaching some of our most at-risk children and teens during months when they're not in school and traditionally have a lot less structure. These 13 organizations represent a vast array of groups, big and small, who are doing critical work in our city. In fact, one recipient this year operates a brand-new youth reentry program that has never received any financial support, so we are happy to be able to back the work they are doing here in Knoxville. These 13 programs are all part of a bigger strategy of reducing crime in our city. To these organizations and to our community empowerment team and to you, I say thank you for the support. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution proposing to annex one parcel of land situated in the 6th Civil District of Knox County, Tennessee, to be within Ward 47, City Block 47665 of the City of Knoxville, Tennessee. of Knoxville, Tennessee, abutting the eastern right-of-way of Sabre Drive, being approximately .64 acres, known as all of Tax Map 120, insert N., Group D., Parcel 03100, this day known as 7624 Sabre Drive, and to approve a plan of service for said area.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if we could get more information on this property. I tried to look into it. It looked like everything around it was city.
I believe it's half in the city, half in the county. Wanted to be all in the county, in the city. Mr. Cannon, are you the best person to answer that question?
Yes, ma'am. This was a specific request by the property owner to be annexed into the city. This was not initiated by the city.
There, this is a mix of areas that are city and county. In that Sabre Drive, that area, I believe it's Kingston Woods, is that correct? It has a real mix of housing that some are in the city, some are in the county, but this is a request to be annexed.
Yeah, that's what I kept my head around. But it sounds like our public services are already having to navigate that.
Yeah, they're already, yeah, they're actually there getting the other houses that are in Kingston Woods, and so they will now add this to their route, assuming this passes.
Yep. And the other, just a quick question. I just noticed in terms of what KUB included, the broadband services were not a part of that. This is an area where the broadband will be expanded to, correct?
Yeah. They'll provide broadband in every single place where they provide electrical service.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Well, I didn't know if Mr. Vice Mayor Roberto wanted to speak first. It's his district or I can, I just have a personal, I just have a personal anecdote about this area that might explain. If you, if you look at the KGIS map, this is where Morrell and Gleason, it's the neighborhood behind there, south of West Town Mall. So, when I was knocking doors there, I don't remember, 2017 maybe, I was at this house and somehow it came up, the people next door knew somebody that I knew and, or they were talking about their neighbor. And they were like, "Oh, yeah, right next door." And I'm like, "Wait, that's a friend of mine." And I couldn't figure out why I wasn't knocking on their door. So, then I go talk to them. This particular neighborhood, and this might be something Vice Mayor was going to talk about, but when this area was annexed originally, some of these people fought getting annexed. And so, this particular friend of mine was living back in his childhood home, but he had been in my neighborhood, and that's how I knew him. Anyway, I'm like, "Lou, what's going on? What do you mean you don't live in the city?" He's like, "Yeah, my parents sued to not be in the city." So, they are, there are houses in this neighborhood that are entirely surrounded by city lots, but these people had to refile in court or something every year to my, they said they had to do something every year to not be in the city limits. So, this is kind of a hot mess and we have city services driving past these houses constantly. So, I think that's a great thing and people are not having to pay for trash pickup and they get fire service and all these things because everyone around them does. But it was just the weirdest story because I was like, "Why are they not on my walk list?" And they were like, "We're going to vote for you, Lauren." And I was like, "You can't because you're in the county, but you're in the city." So, this is just a very strange area with like, I don't know, eight houses omitted.
Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that was pretty close to what I was going to say. You know, when you get west of Morrell and that area, you can get into that kind of a situation. In this particular area, most of the surrounding homes are actually in the city. There are a few, and so they're slowly coming back. And we do see in this area, you know, over, over the years I've been on council, we've seen several times where folks have asked for this annexation. And, you know, this is a voluntary annexation. People have to request it. It's not something that is, is being done for them. And so, the only thing I was going to do is offer that clarity and just say, "Welcome to the city."
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution proposing to annex one parcel of land situated in the 9th Civil District of Knox County, Tennessee, to be within Ward 25, City Block 25916 of the City of Knoxville, Tennessee, abutting the eastern right-of-way of Dresser Road, being approximately 5.29 acres, known as all of Tax Map 122, insert O., Group J., Parcel 002.01, this day known as 2920 Dresser Road, and to approve a plan of service for said area.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
And seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents to award a total amount not to exceed $50,000 in historic preservation grant awards to support property improvements to eligible historic properties within the City of Knoxville.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. I just want to thank the Housing and Neighborhood Development Team, there, there some of you are, for working with Blunt Mansion and Knox Heritage on this year's Historic Preservation Awards. This item is another step towards preserving the rich history in our city, which is important. But as someone who lives in a house that's over 100 years old, it's not always easy. So, part of this funding will be used by Knox Heritage to create a grant program to assist homeowners who are working to save historic properties in Knoxville. So, thanks for council's consideration and support for this ongoing program. I think it will lead us to see a very positive impact going forward. Councilmember Parker?
Actually, I'll hold off on my question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Thomas?
That's late. Just briefly, you know, I remember way back in the history of Knoxville, maybe 30 or 40 years when historic preservation wasn't as appreciated as it is now. And not only have people learned that it's the aesthetics and quality of life, but it's a good economic asset as well. And it adds to tax base in the city and makes our city more valuable overall. So, there's, not only is it beautiful and have history, but it has an economic benefit to it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Okay, that made me want to kind of return to my question. I know we've had a charter mandated commitment to providing funding for parks and historic preservation. And this kind of stood out to me because it's a, perhaps a smaller amount than I've seen in the past for historic preservation. And I was wondering if we have, if that requirement under the charter has expired?
I'm not sure I'm familiar with that requirement under the charter. I'm not.
I am, ma'am.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, ma'am. We do set aside the required amount. I want to say, not having the information right here in front of me, it's like 250K a year. We do set aside that amount, but that's like minuscule to what we do overall.
Mayor Ash did that going out the office. It was called a penny for parks, so a penny on the tax rates to go towards parks.
Parks or historic preservation?
Parks. I can look it up.
Okay.
Parks. This is different. This is, we've had for about 10 years, maybe more historic preservation dollars done through what used to be the old Community Development Department, now HND, to, you know, award people who submit the best proposals to be able to kind of upkeep property and get it back the way they want it to look with, in terms of preserving history, and that's what this year is about.
So, this is a separate fund and there still exists that will say $250,000?
That is correct.
Annual commitment?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to file a grant application with the Tennessee Department of Transportation in the amount of $1,125,000 to provide funding to the City of Knoxville on behalf of Knoxville Area Transit for multimodal access grant funds for fiscal year 2024, with a city match of up to $125,000 to rehabilitate and renovate bus stops along state routes, and if such application is approved, to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents to accept such a grant award.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Keep Knoxville Beautiful Incorporated to lease the Charter Doyle Park facility located at 5100 Martin Mill Pike for an amount not to exceed $400 monthly.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you all for finding a good use for this prop, for this asset of the city. Great park, great organization, and it's a great part of town. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that it's great when the city can form these partnerships, especially during this time when it's really difficult for nonprofits that provide some really critical services to our city or having a hard time finding affordable office space. And what I wanted to ask about is, I'm not able to pull it up as quickly as I'd like, but in the agenda, I read that the decision is made by a, I think, a land acquisition committee? I'm just wondering, how often is this committee deliberating potential properties for community use? Is it rare? Is, are there ways that community members can get on a list to be considered?
I'm not sure how many assets we have available for that kind of purpose. Mr. Brace, can you speak to that?
I believe the committee that you're referring to is, there's an internal property acquisition committee that is essentially there not necessarily to vet policy on who gets property, but to make sure that, A, there is adequate funding, should there be a need for funding, that, you know, we legally own it, that the use is legally allowed. So, it has the Finance Director, it has Mr. Berry, Chip Berry, it has the Law Director. So, it's really there to pre-vet things to make sure that we can do what a said organization within the city wants to do and that we financially can support doing that. So, I think Ms. Ely is here from Parks and Rec to talk about how this property was disposed of, but that committee is an internal committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Golf Convergence Incorporated DBA JJ Keegan Plus to conduct a study of the city's three public golf courses for an amount not to exceed $44,800.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I think Ms. Ely, you might be able to answer questions about this. That'd be my guess. If, kind of what do we anticipate or what do we hope to get out of this study, which I very much support us doing? So, I just wanted to hear a little bit about what we're going to get.
Cheryl Ely, Director of Parks and Recreation. The biggest thing is really to look at all of our properties, and we do have three golf courses that we oversee. But to really look at it, understand what we're doing, what's missing, what do we need to look at, capital improvements. There's also a couple of issues that we want to make sure people address and having someone outside the city and outside the current management team look at that and give some input. So, we're looking for recommendations to, as we go into the process of, I guess, the contract for the current management team will end the end of this year. And so, having that information will give us a lead way of trying to decide how to basically figure out where we're going from here.
So, the timeframe for when we hope to have results from the study is?
We're looking at about September of this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Smith?
Oh, Testerman.
Thank you. I'm just curious. I know that we've allocated some dollars in this coming year's budget for Williams Creek, and the study obviously encompasses that. I'm just curious, is any of this working in tandem or contingent on this study that's going to be done?
I think we're looking at both of those. So, it's working in tandem because we work with Williams Creek to look at their process and the program. But it really, we hope that it will look at all of our properties and we internally can look at it also. So, Williams Creek has been raising money for some of their properties, and I know we've given some money. But really, to understand what is happening at each one of those properties so that all of us understand it, even though, because I'm not a golfer. I tell most people I golf, but I don't understand golf. And so, I think having that information allows us to look at all of our properties in a really well-thought-out pathway and provide recommendations to Williams Creek as well as the other two golf courses that we oversee.
So, in addition, on those dollars that are, that are allocated for this coming budget year, do we know what any of those either improvements or allocations are toward or are we going to wait on this?
Most of the allocations, if I remember correctly, were that they had some clubhouse issues that they needed to address, as well as some holes that they were doing. So, if you've gone out there recently, you can see that they've actually made some improvements on at least a couple of the holes, and they wanted to further going through those ideas. And so, this, the money from this year really will help kind of move that forward. Those are things that truly needed to happen. And so, we know that that is where we're going with that part of it. But I think it will work in tandem that as they're going through it with that funding, they can really look at how it should be allocated if there is a change or a difference.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Please scroll down the agenda. Thank you.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a 2023 Paul Coverdell Forensic Science Improvement Grant Award of $500,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance with no required local match for funding of the police department's forensic unit to pay for salaries, computers, forensic equipment, training, and supplies.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11L is a resolution authorizing the Knoxville Police Department to participate in the National Public Safety Partnership established by the U.S. Department of Justice.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Someone signed up to speak against this item. Ms. Everie, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have up to five minutes.
Constance, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37914. I'm against this for a lot of reasons because let's begin at the first one. Abel, what's the status of Abel? I thought we already had initiated a program where the police departments are supposed to be getting their act cleaned up and pulled together. Let's be realistic. The resolution of Lisa Edwards' investigation is not only dissatisfactory, it is disgusting and degrading. I appreciate the performance you put on for the children because now I'm going to hold you all to the same sentiments that you gave to these kids to this particular matter right now. Because you have not stood up, nor have you represented, nor have you shown real backbone and really stood up in your roles right here locally that has nothing to do with the state level, that you could do something about right now as the city council and the mayor. So, my question is, as I looked up this program that y'all trying to partnership with, that is definitely coming off like more cop gander than anything, actually, one of the key quotes of this partnership states that DOJ is committed to advancing work that promotes civil rights, increase access to justice, supports crime victims, protects the public from crime and evolving threats, builds trust between law enforcements and communities, the PSP initiative supports advanced DOJ principles, and all of its activities. Now, tell me, when has Knoxville Police Department ever lifted up to a single one of those orthos or ethics? Oh, never. And more importantly, it's back to what I've said before because we have had five shootings and at least three confirmed killings from Saturday to Monday morning. Now, violence interruption, what are we doing with that? Because y'all getting millions of dollars for that, but the effects of it is zero. Let's talk about the other factors, like how this unethical hiring was a part of the issue from the get-go. I find it very satisfaction that Lisa Edwards' lawyer and my press release for my campaign literally echoed each other, which is that Paul Noel is not the man for this job and he should be fired. And more importantly, India, as a leader, you made a terrible selection in what you called one of the most important. in what you called one of the most important hires of your entire mayorship. You have failed once again in this particular category. I want the children to realize a key part. If Knoxville was serious about preventing incidents like West High School and Gibbs High School, then guess what? This goes right back to Anthony Thompson Jr. and Austin East High School. We have to go all the way back to how we got here in the first place. Now, I heard the young man say that he lived in fear about the thought of what would happen if someone was killed in his school. But I want to remind that young man, go ask Austin East High School what the trauma was like for them when it did happen in their school, when the police department came in their school, murdered Anthony Thompson Jr. in their high school bathroom, and then you all turned around. The same folks who claim to be so compassionate and supportive of this clause are the same people who told those same kids to get over it. Brought in white men experts who are the self-proclaimed experts of black struggle and issues and told our kids they only needed six days to recover from the trauma that they have been through. Let's not forget, they had Anthony Thompson Jr., they had Dada, they had Jatoria, they had Justin, and several other classmates who had been murdered in their community. And y'all bring in white men who self-proclaim experts of black struggle but are not experts in white supremacy and racism. I continue to ask the key question. What does it take to wake up the sociopathic philosophy in Knoxville? Pay attention. Please pay attention to this Knoxville voters, because this is the reality of our city. We are in a crisis here, and y'all laying India Parade around like she's really been solving issues, and she has solved nothing. Y'all sitting back here talking about spending money on historical sites and other things, but we got people literally losing their homes right now as we speak. We have people literally being priced out of their households, and you all are more worried about cop ganda and continue to try to cover up the murder of what I'm now going to ding, the murder of Lisa Edwards. But let's not forget, we're still asking justice for people like Philly Fell. We're still asking for justice for Anthony Thompson Jr. We're still asking justice for Robert Bailey. We're still asking for justice for Ciara McCullough. We're still asking for justice for the guy who got killed by the cop who was thinking he played for NASCAR on Kingston Place Highway. This is why I am running, and if you are not saying you're voting for Constance Everie, then you are not being serious about change for the city of Knoxville. I yield my time.
Counsel, that concludes public forum on this. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some frustrations over this, even though when you read it, it does sound nice and it sounds like, you know, why would we object to it? And I do support this because there's no cost to the city, and hopefully, if this were successful, it would be another opportunity to learn something, to improve services in our city. But it is frustrating because we have been going through constant conversations about what needs to be done to improve policing in Knoxville, improve our ability to solve crimes. And we've learned about the difficulties that KPD is facing. Definitely support reaching out for additional funding and support to increase our forensic capacity. But one conversation I feel like has been lost is, I've heard from the community, I've heard from KPD officers, that we need more homicide detectives. And that was one recommendation that I saw listed in here that was a part of one of the cities that went through this program, Cleveland, Ohio. You know, the outcome of this process was a recommendation that more homicide investigators were needed. And so it would be, you know, a bit frustrating to go through a process to learn things we've already known, rather than creating plans to address where our capacity is focused in terms of KPD hours and where it's not. So I'm in support of this, but I'm in support of us implementing changes and recognizing that we are continuing to reach out for help. And help is good, but at some point, we got to implement some significant changes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and if awarded, accept a charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant from the United States Department of Transportation in the amount of $500,000 with a 20% local match required to strategically deploy publicly accessible electric vehicle charging and alternative fueling infrastructure in the Knoxville community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is a resolution approving a contract between the City of Knoxville and Crosland P L L C to audit the accounts of the City of Knoxville for fiscal year ending 2023 for a base year contract price of $159,500, with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12A is an ordinance of the council of the City of Knoxville to amend Chapter 2, Article 3, Sections 2-450, 2-458, and 2-459 of the Knoxville City Code to adjust the classification and compensation plans.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Counsel, this item is going to help us continue implementing the compensation plan that you all approved last year. As you know, a big part of that plan was to bring our uniform employees' salaries up to a competitive wage. This resulted in the biggest one-time raise in the history of KPD and K F D. But this plan was also about showing our continued support throughout their careers through great benefits, retirement, and the revamped STEP Plan. Under the new STEP Plan, our police and firefighters will be getting an annual 4.2% increase in pay. So thank you for your continued support of our first responders and for helping make the City of Knoxville a competitive employer. The compensation plan is working. Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. While I support the continued pay increases, I'm not in support of these new classifications that have been added, particularly staffing for the Real-Time Information Center. You know, I've stated these concerns previously, and it's similar to my statement on the previous agenda item. This seems to be a new strategy that we're running full force, full steam ahead towards without assessing what the overall cost and what the overall benefit will be to the city. As it's been presented, what has been lifted up are other cities who have this technology, who are experiencing, you know, in most of those cases, higher rates of violence than what we're experiencing. And so my concern is where we invest these dollars, into those homicide detectives that were mentioned earlier or into these three staff people for this information center? My concern is what the overall technology cost will be. And again, how this will truly help us address the increase in violence that we've seen in our city. So in my opinion, we just simply have not had a conversation as a city about whether this is the best investment for our dollars, and therefore, I'm not able to support it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
12B is an ordinance to close a portion of an unnamed alley between St. Mary's Street and Huron Street, subject to one condition, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owners, City of Knoxville, applicant 5th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12C is an ordinance approving the request of Winter Past Development LLC, Dennis Norvett, for an amendment to the Northwest County Sector Plan from Office to Light Industrial for property located at 1301 East Wise Garber Road, 3rd District.
Move to approve. Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12D is an ordinance approving the request of Winter Past Development LLC, Dennis Norvett, for a one-year plan amendment from Office to Light Industrial for property located at 1301 East Wise Garber Road, 3rd District.
Move to approve. Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12E is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 1301 East Wise Garber Road from O District to I M U District, Winter Past Development LLC, Dennis Norvett, applicant 3rd District.
Move to approve. Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12F is an ordinance approving the request of Benjamin C. Mullins for an amendment to the East City Sector Plan from Light Industrial to Mixed Use Special District Magnolia Avenue for property located at Zero Nash Road and for portions of three properties located at Zero Pelham Road, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. If Mr. Mullins could come down, I have a couple of questions. And I'm trying to find it. I think I've gotten a better sense of it reading through all of the items pertaining to this property, but it was mentioned somewhere in this report from planning that there was a a buffer between the residential and this area planned for a zoning change. Could you speak to that?
Well, you may be referring to-
Mr. Mullins, if you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, well, I'm sorry. Ben Mullins, 550 West Main Street, France McCollum Seymour. There's another zoning application that's a little further that there is. We changed the zoning to preserve a buffer from the residential that's just to the east of this. That may be the one you're referring to. This one, all of the property that's being rezoned is to the north of the newly planned Rock Point Drive, which Pelham Road has been closed, and we're actually creating a new road there. And so that road is going to be between all these properties that are being rezoned from CG2 and the part of it from IG is going to CH2. But the buffer zone between the industrial properties and the residential properties on Nash Road, I believe, is another application that's tonight that's related to this.
Okay, yes, same area.
Yeah, and I'll be glad to talk more about that one as well, but they're different uses, but the same owner of the property is associated with these rezonings.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about the new road going in? Is this a private road?
Well, this part of the road that serves these parcels are going to be a public road, Rock Point Drive. That's being closed down, and it's being closed and reoriented. You see the outline of the zoning that's in your packet, and the new road is going to run along the southern edge of these properties. And where the road currently turns, Pelham Road currently turns up the hill south, that is where the private common access driveway is going to start. That's going to connect to Spring Hill.
And then there is going to be improved or access to the on-ramp there?
I think T-Dot may have some plans for that, but I'm not exactly sure where they are on that, or there's been talk of that. I can't really comment on that.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12G is an ordinance approving the request of Benjamin C. Mullins for a one-year plan amendment from Light Industrial to Mixed Use Special District Magnolia Avenue for property located at Zero Nash Road and for portions of three properties located at Zero Pelham Road, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12H is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at Zero McCullough Avenue, 0288, 308, and 330 Pelham Road, and portions of property located at 0305, 309, 317, 325 Pelham Road from CG2 District to CH2 District, and to change the base zoning of property located at Zero Nash Road and portions of property located at Zero Pelham Road, and from IG District to CH2 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Benjamin C. Mullins, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Parker?
Is this the item, Mr. Mullins, or is it later?
It's later. It is, we would be looking at U, 12UV and X, or W.
Let me, if you all will bear with me for just a moment, because I found the language earlier and wanted to point it out. But I don't see it now. Okay, we can move on.
Okay. Any other questions on item 12H? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12I is an ordinance approving the request of Benjamin C. Mullins for an amendment to the South City Sector Plan from Low Density Residential to Civic and Institutional. Oh. 12L is an ordinance approving the request of Merchant Holdings LLC for an amendment to the Northwest City Sector Plan from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential Office for a portion of property located at 2400 Merchant Drive.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I want to make just a few comments on this site here. This is a site that's been waiting for the right development and the right developer for quite a while. And I want to give thanks to Craig Cobb and Jordana Nelson of the Dominion Group. They came forward with a really good proposal. They worked really well with the neighborhoods. One of the things they did, too, was they respected the current zoning, which although this will require a zoning change, they're not going very far out of the original footprint, which was commercial to begin with. This also leaves about 30 acres of land that they plan to acquire, and separate discussions are going on with Carol Evans with Legacy Parks and Cheryl Ely of City Parks and Recs for the possibility that other 30 acres will be donated for public access. So this is a really good package. And I also want to thank Debbie Phillips, President of Norwood Homeowners Association, for being engaging and also protecting her neighborhood over years until this right development did come along. And further, I want to thank my colleagues on City Council for their wisdom, because this came before them about two years ago, and it wasn't the right development, and it wasn't the right developer. And in their wisdom, in your wisdom, you had some patience, and the right one has come along. So this property has been debated for years, even going back to days of Lynn Redmond. And I think that we now have the right situation. And just full disclosure, I am on the boards of Legacy Parks. I serve as a volunteer and without compensation, and they are engaged in some ancillary discussions on some related property. But thank you, colleagues, and I hope we approve this.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. Mayor, I would just say that this used to be known as the Girl Scout property, that the Girl Scouts bought years ago to perhaps put a camp in. We sold it to someone that wanted the cell tower, and it is really rewarding to see, since Girl Scouts are about preserving and the environment, it's really great to see that this development has worked out so that there will be an opportunity with, to keep a lot of that open to the public.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12M is an ordinance approving the request of Merchant Holdings LLC for a one-year plan amendment from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential Office for a portion of property located at 2400 Merchant Drive, 5th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12N is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of a portion of property located at 2400 Merchant Drive from CN District and AG Districts to RN6 District, 5th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12O is an ordinance approving the request of Taylor D. Forrester for an amendment to the South County Sector Plan from Low Density Residential to Mixed Use Special District, Alcoa Highway Small Area Plan for a portion of property located at Zero Dresser Road, 1st District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12P is an ordinance approving the request of Taylor D. Forrester for a one-year plan amendment from Low Density Residential to Mixed Use Special District, Alcoa Highway Small Area Plan for a portion of property located at Zero Dresser Road, 1st District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Q is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for a portion of property located at Zero Dresser Road from RN1 District to CG1 District, Taylor D. Forrester, applicant 1st District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a few questions about this rezoning, and some of the comments made by the public on this rezoning. It seems that part of this property is looking to be rezoned to commercial, but keeping part of the property zoned as RN1. And there were questions from community members about the plan for this area, the small area plan, and commitments to a natural buffer going in between commercial activity and the residential. Is there any plan for a natural buffer?
Taylor Forrester, 1111 North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee. As far as the natural buffer, the line that you're referring to that represents the part of the property that we're requesting to be zoned, the CG1, the remainder behind that, which is kind of that finger that extends between those two residential developments there, that would remain the RN1. There are no plans to develop that. Really, by the creation of this rezoning of the part up front next to the CG1, there's really nothing you could do with that RN1. So, that's the natural buffer it refers to. And kind of to tie it back on, I think it was Resolution F was our adjacent tract of this that we're, that the resolution for the annexation was brought in. So, it'd all kind of be that frontage there along the Alcoa Corridor.
Gotcha. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12R is an ordinance approving the request of Urban Engineering Incorporated for an amendment to the Southwest County Sector Plan from Medium Density Residential to Medium Density Residential Office for property located at 355 South Galahereview Road, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12S is an ordinance approving the request of Urban Engineering Incorporated for a one-year plan amendment from Medium Density Residential to Medium Density Residential Office for property located at 355 South Galahereview Road, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12T is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 355 South Galahereview Road from OP District to RN6 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Urban Engineering Incorporated, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12U is an ordinance approving the request of Chris Burkhart for an amendment to the East City Sector Plan from Low Density Residential to Light Industrial for property located at Zero Old State Road and a portion of property located at 299 Nash Road, as shown on Exhibit A, leaving any special purpose land use classification unchanged, 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, now, let's talk about a buffer. So, this is a request for rezoning. There's mention of there being a buffer between the commercial activity and the residential community. There's concern from planning staff that additional development will disturb that buffer. I wanted to hear from you.
Yeah, Ben Mullins, 550 West Main Street. The application was revised after planning staff's recommendation, but before Planning Commission voted to remove a significant portion of the property from the zoning. Yeah, and looking through the packet with the City Council, that was probably City Council's agenda, it is confusing the way it kind of was put together. And if you'll look, there was a submission that I did. I don't think the complete submission was reprinted in the packet, although there was a hyperlink in the Planning Commission webpage comments where I submitted it, that really kind of told the story. And I have the handout of what was submitted. I could pass that out if that would help. But initially, the zoning was all of Zero Old State, which, if you have your zoning map, you know, it is the first part of the zoning that's on the west part of these two parcels. And then it was the more narrow lot, which is 299 Nash, which ran all the way up. It's a very narrow portion to Nash Road and connected Nash Road in that residential development. And what the zoning was revised was to make the zoning line really follow the southern boundary of Old State Road and come across. And so, it would not rezone that portion of the 299 Nash that extended into Nash Road and that residential development. When you look at that property, it's all hillside. It's all straight up a hill. It's not really suited to be developed for anything. And in fact, there's no intent to develop it for industrial use. It's not really suitable for residential use. The only reason it has to be rezoned is City Codes is requiring us to make the zoning match the existing IG, because the private drive that's connecting to that public drive we talked about at the previous is going to be running across a portion of, certainly of the old Zero Old State Road, and it shaves the 299 Nash Road. And staff say, and if you're having a common access driveway, a private road, the zoning on that property where that driveway is located has to match the zoning of the property it serves. So, that's why the industrial zone is being asked for these two portions of these properties. And you consider what we did with the prior zoning we're talking about. This is only about .85 acres. We removed 2.2 acres of industrial zoning and converted it to CH2 on the other. So, these two together, there's a net loss of about 1.3 acres of industrial zoning. But this is really just to accommodate that private drive that's going to serve these industrial zones that are already there and then connect to Spring Hill Road. But it's, we were able to pull it away from the residential more, so there'd be no concern there could be industrial traffic that could get to Nash Road and that residential neighborhood.
Okay, I'll see if my colleagues have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, so to further clarify, Mr. Mullins, and I think Ms. Hillman, Mr. Welch, it looks like in our packets, 1166, page 1166 and page 1167 of our packets, Mr. Mullins, you sent an email on April 10th to Ms. Hillman and Mr. Welch with the revision, and we have maps there that reflect what the amendment was-
That's correct.
-that was adopted and passed at the Planning Commission. So, you guys published, your opinions are published what date? Before the April 13th meeting?
Yeah, it was published prior to, you know, getting these documents from-
Like seven days prior?
Yes.
Okay, so like Thursday-ish is when your staff opinion is published. Mr. Mullins, you came forward with this amendment after staff opinion?
I was hired after staff's opinion was published.
Okay, well, that clears that up. Okay, thank you. I think I see the timeline and where the amendment comes from here.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12V is an ordinance approving the request of Chris Burkhart for a one-year plan amendment from Low Density Residential to Light Industrial for property located at Zero Old State Road and a portion of property located at 299 Nash Road, as shown on Exhibit A, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12W is an ordinance to change the base zoning of property located at Zero Old State Road and a portion of property located at 299 Nash Road, as shown on Exhibit A, from RN1 District to IG District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Chris Burkhart, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12X is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at Zero Central Avenue Pike from AG District to RN3 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Robert Gregory, applicant 5th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve?
Second.
And seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Y is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 513 Cooper Street from IG District to IMU District, Jeffrey Nash, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion?
Just a question, Mayor. I just was curious about what the proposed use of this site was going to be.
Mr. Welch?
I'm not sure if I recall what the proposed case was for this. Yeah, this, excuse me.
You're talking about the one on Cooper Road?
Yeah.
Why?
I'm sorry, you're talking about 12Y, right?
The building under the bridge there, it's being used as a drop-dog training facility.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And it did really good work, because my dog comes now. I didn't intend to oppose it. I was just curious about the purpose of it.
Yeah, Director Welch, I can find out later.
Yeah, that was for canine training, for the previous one, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas and Director Swanson and Mr. Welch. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, council, we have a couple of people signed up for public forum. First is Calvin DeBrel. Mr. DeBrel, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is Calvin DeBrel, 5201 Holson Drive, here in Knoxville. Chief, know the world is watching. You got some work to do. I'm reading from Sunday, July 31st, Knoxville News Sentinel here. "We can recover from most mistakes, take the appropriate action, move forward. Unfortunately, truthfulness is not one of those mistakes. As police officers, we are held to a higher standard. One of those standards is to tell the truth, no matter how much it hurts at all times." Those are your words. Now, Ms. Edwards died in the custody of your officers, and I've spoken earlier about having my life threatening by officers Baldwin, Lane, Jones, Whitehead, Kimber, and Turner. Now, you can also add Wardlaw, DeSanto, Barnett, and Dugas to that list, because Ms. Lisa Edwards is dead. They had a duty to help that woman, not treat her like she did not matter. It's called trespass with force of arms. That woman, the world seen her suffering medical distress. She was crying out for help. The pressure of men standing around her with weapons threatening her pushed her over the edge, regardless of what the coroner said after the fact. That kind of pressure, when you are suffering shortness of breath, increased heart rate, she died in the back of one of your cruisers. She didn't die for Sanders. She died in the back of one of your cruisers. Now, let's go back to 2013. You had three officers in your department beat a guy on the side of the road. Randy Nichols did not do his job. David Roush, your current TBI director, did not do his job. Them three officers were fired. It should be nothing less and could be more for these officers that are responsible for Ms. Edwards' death. Charges being negligent homicide, willful homicide. Anything less is derelict of duty. My military experience, when a chain of command breaks down, it starts at the top. A Navy commander here was relieved of duty for one of his recruits dying. Every time you turn around, somebody dying at the hands of law enforcement around here. Something needs to change. You, the new guy on the block, everybody's watching you to see what you do to get this mess under control. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Next person who signed up to speak is Mara Chino-Jones. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Mayor Chino-Jones, 792 Lula Powell Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee. And with me stating my address, I invite- And with me stating my address, I invite everyone, everyone at this panel to come to my address. You want to know why I extend that invitation? Because the current building that I'm living in, my maintenance man, the owners, have no concern. Last year alone, starting December and mid-winter, are you guys aware that we had pipes burst three times? We just had another pipe burst in recent replies this Monday. My biggest concern is, are you worried about your people's mental state of mind in the 6th District? Really? Because also in my building, 792, please come over. You don't even have to come into my door. The pipe, if my maintenance man can look me in my face, tell me everything that's wrong with what I'm reporting, and then turn around and the next breath, look at me as if I'm supposed to deal with it? Do you know what sleep deprivation looks like? Do you know what it's like to be tortured? Because that's exactly what I'm living with for the past year, every single day. I raise one question to this panel. Why is it that when it comes to civilians breaking any ordinance, we are ordered to pay the most highest amount? I Googled it online. I looked it up. A civilian is charged $114 for a noise ordinance. That is ridiculous, when the company that owns my apartment complex well has enough money to pay a fine. What is the point of us building all of these new buildings when they are not going to be held responsible? Because that $50 is a slap on the wrist. It's no different than what we're dealing with with the gun violence in our community. Every time you guys sit here and act all high and mighty because you're not in the 6th District, oh, I'm sorry, because you're not in the urban district, well, let me give you another word for that. It's called city dweller. That is another term for urban, city dweller. And that's exactly how you guys are treating us every time we have to sit here as civilians. I have been sleep deprived for a whole year because my maintenance man feels like he's too good to climb up a pole, which is what my city dollar pays him to do. At this point, I was asked last week to call City Code. You know what City Code told me? Oh, well, we're just going to send it back to your maintenance man, who does nothing. At this point, I wish someone would hand me the keys to the ladder so I can unlock it. I am a civilian. I have not been trained in this, but I guarantee you I have the proper tools to get on top of my roof and fix it myself so I can have sleep at night. I also have a work-from-home job. Do you know how embarrassing it is for someone to say, ma'am, I can't hear you, it sounds like a 1547 is landing in your apartment? I'm sorry, Fire Chief Commissioner, if a pipe has gas in it and it's leaning up against metal, vibrations included, over a period of time, does that not create a hole for that gas to leak out? Why is that gas pipe not a priority for my apartment complex? And I'm right there at it. It's over my head. Every single day, this is what I hear. The last hailstorm, I heard it over the hailstorm. And this is perfectly okay for us to keep building new buildings. I'm sorry, that baseball field you're talking about, it's in my backyard. I do not want to come home from a long day at work at Moe's to come and hear a baseball game. And I'm going to end you with this. Why are we getting a baseball field when we can't even get KPD in check? That is going to create another problem. Alcohol, DUIs, and more fighting. I read my time.
Ms. Jones, if you want to wait till the end of the meeting, I'll have someone check, and we can send codes out to try to check on your problems.
I'm sorry to be in there, ma'am. That's what I'm saying there. But I just said that they're giving the responsibility back to the maintenance man. That does no good.
Next person signed up for public forum is Hassan Attatra.
My name is Hassan. I'm a lifelong South Knoxvilleian and a child of Palestinian refugees who have survived the ongoing ethnic cleansing of our people. In times like these, as we face unprecedented challenges, overdoses, homelessness, displacement, suicides, death by gun violence, and the confluence of these factors at once, our people deserve a budget that reflects the needs of our communities and that shows us that our elected leaders take our losses, our pain, our trauma, our lives, our deaths seriously. I, along with several community orgs that represent thousands of Knoxvilleians, ask for the following changes to the mayor's proposed budget. One, the decoupling of the Office of Community Empowerment and the Office of Community Safety and their separation from the administration. There are too many responsibilities encapsulated by the administration, which has doubled its budget from $5 to $10 million since 2020. Our council has limited powers to bring forward changes uplifted by our communities. They can propose that funds be transferred between departments, but have no power to make line item requests concerning how departments use those funds. We are asked to trust that our administration will act in good faith and be transparent with us. We would rather see democratic processes in place that don't force us to simply trust an administration that has a sad track record in terms of following through with commitments and transparency. Two, funding for an alternative response team. Funding an alternative response team has for years been a community priority. After Ant was killed by KPD in his high school bathroom with no attempt to de-escalate, to talk to him, to listen to him, to love him, to call his mama, to support him, we asked if we would have to witness another preventable tragedy before our city was willing to act. With the preventable death of Lisa Edwards, we have now experienced the loss so many of us warned our city about. At the hands of KPD, we've yet again lost someone who would still be with us had an alternative response team existed and responded with love and compassion to Ms. Lisa's pleas for help before she was taken from her family and community. Not only would funding an alternative response team prevent unnecessary death and minimize at-risk communities' contact with the legal system, but it would also ensure that KPD is not forced to engage with people who just need support and that they acknowledge they are not trained or equipped to support. There's no question that an alternative response team should be funded in this year's budget. Three, more funding for affordable housing and for our houseless community. Housing costs have increased by more than 50% since pre-pandemic. We are being priced out of the communities we grew up in, and people trying to start a life here are not able to find housing at all, as we experience housing crisis, a pandemic, inflation, desperation. Many more families and people are being displaced from the communities we grew up in and are experiencing houselessness as we are being priced out. Our city has an abysmal track record in how houseless folks are treated. Houseless people deserve bodily autonomy as well, and forcibly displacing the poorest and most neglected members of our community is a tragic injustice that has shocked many of us these past years. Rather than rounding up and displacing the city's most vulnerable members, a majority of whom suffer from severe mental illness, substance abuse disorders, and chronic poverty, we must invest in supporting our houseless community and ensuring that poverty does not continue to be a death sentence to folks who have been long abandoned by our leaders. One out of every three houseless men in this country is a veteran. Twenty-two veterans commit suicide every day, many of whom are houseless. My dear friend and South Knoxvilleian Josh Evans is among those veterans lost to suicide in a jail cell after an arrest during a mental health crisis. Four, more funding to groups on the ground already working with the most vulnerable youth and people in our city. As our city has reeled from the death of so many black youth these past few years and so many people to gun violence, we should be funding groups on the ground working with the most at-risk communities. Orgs like Ms. Jackie Holloway's Canvas can do miracles, Felicia Utsi's Love is the Answer, Minarch Tribe, Community Defense, and so many others commit their lives to working with those closest to the pain. They already do work with the most at-risk youth and empower them to pursue their passions through art, music, dance, community, food, love. They are run by people who live with the same traumas of the little ones they fight every day. Four, funding groups like these would increase their capacities to uplift hundreds more of the most at-risk children in our city. These babies' lives should be our priority. Community-led violence interruption is necessary and important, but so much more is needed to our elected leaders. If it were your babies, your elders, your families, your mothers who are preventably killed, lost, forced into...
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
I'll just finish my sentence. Who are preventably killed, lost, forced into houselessness, how far would you go to make sure that policies and programs were put in place to make sure that such loss and tragedy never happened again? We ask you to act as if those of us dying were your own.
Thank you. Next person signed up for public forum is Abdullah Hussain.
What do I do?
You state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Gotcha. Hello, Salaam alaikum, peace be with you all. My name is Abdullah Hussain. I live at 1124 Fox Road in Knoxville, Tennessee, 37922. Is that good? Okay. I wanted to start first today by saying hello to everybody and giving you some historical information. So London, England, London and England, was established by the Roman Empire in 49 AD, right? Recently, actually, something interesting happened. Given the British exit from the EU, also known as Brexit, and the subsequent economic, political issues that have happened, the EU, just last week, passed a resolution in support of the Vatican, because of their cultural and historical connection to the city, to actually begin military action to take back London and the rest of England. Obviously, that's ludicrous and ridiculous, but that's an example of what happened 75 years ago yesterday. Seventy-five years ago yesterday, with the support of European countries and the United States, the country of Israel was allowed to be established upon Palestinian land. This was 75 years ago yesterday. I'm going to give you a little bit of information about the establishment of Israel and what it entails, the thought process behind it. So Ben Gurion, the namesake or the person who the airport was named after that, Mayor Kinkanen flew into a few months ago, who was one of the first prime ministers and the founders of Israel, said, and the following are going to be quotes from him. He said, "We must expel the Arabs and take their place. They, the Jewish settlers, faced a cruel reality and saw that there was only one way, and that was to expel the Arab villagers and to burn the villages. And they did this, and they were the first to do this." He said then also, he additionally said, "With compulsory transfer," meaning forced displacement, "we would have a vast area for settlement. I support compulsory transfer. I don't see anything immoral about it." He said, "Palestinian Arab villages inside the Jewish state that resist should be destroyed and their inhabitants expelled beyond the borders of the Jewish state. Meanwhile, Palestinian residents of the urban quarters which dominate access to our egress from towns should be expelled beyond the borders of the Jewish state in the event of their resistance." These are a few things that were said by one of the founders of the State of Israel. As of right now, the US currently gives $3.8 billion a year to Israeli military aid. And a few days ago marks the one-year anniversary of the killing of an American Christian reporter named Shereen Abu Akla. She was in a press jacket, right, press vest, and she was doing a story, and she was shot in the neck by an Israeli sniper as she was doing a story. And as Palestinians left their homes to attend the funeral and to mourn her loss, they were attacked by Israelis. And as they left their homes, Israeli settlers actually went into their homes, broke into their homes, threw their belongings into the street, and established those homes as their own. This is like one year ago, right? This is the current situation in Palestine, right? I've witnessed with my own eyes and ears Palestinian children and elders being shot inside the Masjid Al-Aqsa, the Al-Aqsa Mosque. I've witnessed with my own eyes the beating of this old Palestinian lady who was on the street selling fruits in Jerusalem. Last time I spoke, which is about a month and a half ago, two months ago maybe, when I asked Mayor Kinkanen to not go to Israel, she, sorry, I mentioned that a family member had been killed by an Israeli bombing. And now, unfortunately, we just got word that a couple of days ago, another family member has now been killed and shot by Israeli soldiers. And my cousin sent me pictures of our home with bullet holes all in it from all of this Again, I'm bringing up a lot of international issues. Why am I doing this at a city council meeting? It's really frustrating. But the problem is, unfortunately, that Mayor Kinkanen is going down a road, and, look, May 15th, yesterday, is the day of the establishment of the State of Israel. And there's one community that celebrates this, right? And there's one community that mourns this. I stand here as a representative of a community that is around, you know, a few thousand here in Knoxville. Muslims, Arabs, Arab Christians, Muslim and Christian Palestinians, many of whom voted for you. And we're just not happy. We're just, I know the time's up. I just request, please, like, I'd love to talk to you about these issues. I would love to discuss these things, talk about this situation, and to see that you're not going down this path that's really misrepresenting us and not, anyway, not doing what you should be doing. So thank you so much, Mayor Kinkanen. Hopefully, we can meet soon. That'd be awesome. And also, Mr. Smith, I think we spoke over the phone one time, actually, about this. So love to get coffee with you too sometime, talk about this issue. Thank you. Y'all have a good one.
Thank you. The last person signed up for public forum is Ms. Everie.
All right, let me keep it quick. So, voters, the message is for you because you ain't got to ask Indy about her path. She showed it to you. You asked her not to take the trip, and she took it. That's pretty direct to what you believe in, or more importantly, y'all said y'all listen to us. And so thanks for being the prime example of how you actually don't listen to us. But that's what I wanted to highlight, Knoxville. Let's run down India Kinkanen's mayorship. We have asked her to not put a baseball stadium on stolen black land. To date, that is still happening. We have South Knoxville who expressed that they don't want the pedestrian walkway because how it was sold to them versus what was printed out and produced in the newspaper is now conflict and possibly even could be deemed a lie. You are still going forward with that initiative. We have asked you to be transparent, authentic, and truthful in the process of the police chief hiring, yet you have been deceptive, deceiving, and lying, and more importantly, wasted taxpayers' dollars trying to cover it up in litigation because Knoxville Sentinel was pressing on their jurisdiction of right with Freedom of Information Act on where and how this man got this job in Knoxville. Hey, Knoxville, your police of chief is a corrupted cop, period. And India knew that. Let's be real. So now that we've laid out the facts, let's talk about what's different when Constance Everie is in office. The difference is that, one, we're not putting $114 million of taxpayers' money that is now under the jurisdiction of control of Avinex and Randy Boyd without having any oversight or say-so to it, more importantly, on stolen black land that is going to price out black residents because you want to put black properties with black pioneers' names on it, starting at $2,500 and a 47% poverty rate demographic. That's something we wouldn't do. Instead, I would take the $100 million that you promised the Equity Task Force and put the money there instead, so we can start rehabilitating the so-called urban removal and gentrification that you claimed in that legislation you were correcting. The other factor, we would use HART Alternative Response Program. It is a proven model that nationally has data to support it. We wouldn't even have to go through that. The next factor, Paul Noel is fired. More importantly, we really do have a public process where we vet our new police of chief, who should be someone locally. I probably would have actually thought about Shelley Clemens for this job, who's actually from the city, graduated from Knoxville College, has direct connection to multiple demographics of the community, but more importantly, is someone that is actually trusted by the community. See how different I would have done it already? The last piece, we know for a fact that housing is something that can be done. Shout out to Chattanooga for proving it. In one year, Mayor Kelly made a 40% reduction to his homeless rate. He saved over 6,000... He saved over 6,000 residents from being put out on the streets with his program. Yet, what has India done? Oh, homeless count turned downs, tried to do it in the last year of her reelection year, tried to put up 500 homes that has a 4,000 waitlist in KCDC right now, and over several hundred applications for these 500 new residents that she eradicated. Again, Knoxville, this is very clear. The only real change is to vote. This is the only way we're going to get something different done in Knoxville. She is a capitalist. Her father is a known well Republican. She is a Dixiecrack. They do not listen to our voices. They have misappropriated our tax dollars. We have a murderous, rogue, out-of-control police department. We have a fall violence interruption program. I'm literally trying to figure out what's your bragging right at this point, India? What is something that you can sincerely say you've done well in the last four and a half years as the mayor of Knoxville? Because so far, I can't find a single thing to add up. You have shut down a hospital, two of those. You turned it into a premature cop city. I mean, I could keep going, literally. You have not addressed the 47% poverty rate. We have no youth enrichment in certain demographics of East Knoxville particularly. I mean, the list continues to run, and the only thing you have to show for yourself is rich white man wealth agenda, particularly Randy Boyd. Knoxville, the facts are out, the data is real, the proof is on the table. Amelia Park has been yelling from the top of her lungs on her platform, what's wrong in this city? And so, the only thing you can do different now is vote, Knoxville, and vote Constance Everie for mayor of Knoxville. I yield the time. Show for debate.
That concludes public forum. This meeting is adjourned.